...that may cause a liability.
I know that when I saw the bid, a huge part of the bid was installation, was getting out the old stuff and laying the... And I think there's a line.
Want to investigate?
Correct.
Can I just mention we're probably thirty-five points in this, and I know we've got seven more pages to go. I don't want to take any of those to tell work, but can we just...
Sure. Okay, so on the expense side here, a lot of these other expenses here are pretty straightforward. The payroll is basically, I just plugged in about a two to three percent raise for Linda. All of the benefit stuff is all similar. The one issue that is new here in the budget is drainage improvements. So in the last, once we put in the concrete streets, one of the issues that has come up is that the roads are really good at moving water. When you had potholes in the roads where seltor skelter and all over the place, and the road, all the water diffused in all different places. Well, now that the roads are in, we've had to make some improvements to the drainage. We made significant improvements at the inlet in front of Fred and Becky's house. All those have worked out wonderfully. The biggest problem we have right now on this side of town is on Shoreline and on Peninsula. It's at Jeremy Oliver's house. He has a very undersized culvert. So when his house was built, it was screwed up. We need to, his culvert is blocking a lot of the water. So the water is going over the top of Shoreline, going over the street, going around the corner and flooding that corner. So it's a problem because in the town's history in the past, they allowed the other side of the street to have buried culverts. There are no bar ditches on Shoreline. That was a screw-up that the town did many years ago, but we inherit it. So it is what it is now, but best we can do is we have to fix that drainage problem because it's gonna cause a failure mode on the road. The water's actually cascading over the top of the road, going to the other side of the road. And we can't have that going. So that's what that line item is. It's a new line item of five thousand dollars. I'm not sure, you know, I'll get a better estimate from Sam. It should be less than five, but it should be in the four thousand range, I'm guessing. But that's what that drainage improvement is. Now, one of the things also to point out real quick is that when we put in the concrete roads, we put in roads. We did not do any drainage work. That was not part of the concrete road project. You notice the ditches weren't dug out. We didn't go out with excavators and redig the ditches and site them all and make sure they smoked this way and that way. We put only roads. That was only that project. We left the ditches the way they were. And by large, that's confined. We just have this one problem here where it's a problem because of the lack of a mortgage. When we get to doing the concrete roads and the shores and in other side of town, as we know on high ridge, there're gonna be significant drainage work as part of the road project. We have a lot of stuff to fix on that side of town. Okay, other things here, pretty much everything else is pretty straightforward. Yeah, it's all pretty straightforward. This other thing down here at the bottom, this is just my estimate basically in the last quarter. In the last four months, what do we think we're gonna owe as far as kind of the big expenses? That's kind of my guess. To try and get forecasts where I think we're gonna be on the cash side.
So that, Jen, those numbers are gonna be added? Those are your estimates to be added?
That's my, that's my kind of guess at what I think we're gonna spend.
So we're... So we could, I'm gonna ask the attorney again, especially since Sam is here, but we're already within two thousand of the budget. Do you want to spend ten more?
I'm being conservative. I'm trying to just pick a big number.
Why would we go over budget in terms of...
I don't know. It's not a controllable number.
Attorney fees are controllable.
No, they're not. You could ask an opinion of Andy tomorrow. I can't stop that. You could ask Andy to write an opinion on whether or not the sky is blue. We have no control over any of Andy's fees. Other than if we all agree not to call Andy.
I know, maybe then some of that is developer things like that.
Yeah, we can't control if, you know, if somebody suits us. So what I do for the cash is I'm trying to take a worst-case estimate to say where's gonna be our cash? What's our cash position at the end of the year? So I'm taking a shot at big numbers. And on the flip side of this is on the other sheet, which I didn't show, is we still get, you know, ten thousand more in sales taxes. We get twenty thousand more in admin fees. There's a revenue side of this, flip side of this, that we're still gonna get. So that was kind of what I was doing here. I was trying to forecast where we're gonna end up in cash. Utility fund. Utility fund is basically, it's self-explanatory. So we're about two, two point eight percent ahead of last year. The utility fund is seasonal. You can't just take eight months and scale it up to twelve. Because we get most of our revenue in the summer. So the way that you look at the budget is I look at where we're at relative to the same day last year. So we're about two point eight percent ahead on water. So if we took in, you know, about a hundred and, so we took in a hundred and forty-seven last year. This should be budgeting a hundred and fifty-four. Now, the item here is, these are me doing it. This is not the audit numbers. These are cash numbers. So this is based on cash, not on accounts receivable. So this basically, this is just a guess. So we just take a guess again on the, on the water and sewer revenues. Sewer revenues we can calculate. We know how many houses we have. You know, we have two hundred and forty-two houses times forty-one dollars times twelve months. You just kind of, you can calculate for a second. Anyway, that's pretty straightforward. When we come to the tax fees and all this kind of stuff here again, we guess, well, what we estimate is four houses. So this is based on four houses coming in. If we have five, then we'll get more tax fees. Okay. If we get three, we get three. So that's kind of how the revenues work. This, Linda decided to print...
I have no control over the budget.
You decided to do, as printing the whole spreadsheet instead of just printing the selection. So you printed the entire spreadsheet.
Is there a blame somebody else?
Isn't that one of Linda's duties, Andy, to print the spreadsheet?
It kept on complaining.
Yeah, there was a foot going. Okay. Sorry, this is a little clumsy.
Linda, is it possible to turn off here?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, on the, on the utility fund, most of this is, you know, basically, it's straightforward. All the TCQ fees, they are what TCQ says they are. Software licensing fees, that is our immunity billing that we pay each year. Operator salaries, that's set by contract. Solid waste is set by contract. Water and sewer scheduled maintenance. Okay, so several years ago, we added routine maintenance to the water and sewer. The idea here was that we had sewer overflows. And part of our agreement with our insurance company is that because they provide us with sewer overflow insurance, is that we have to do periodic maintenance on the sewers. We have to go in and clean them. And we do that. So each year, we pick a part of town and we spend a couple thousand dollars. We jet-clean part of town. And, you know, we've really had, not had any issues with that. However, once again, because of Lake Crest, we're having major problems with people flushing the unflushables. So we destroyed the lift station. We destroyed the motors. And we've had to go and clean the lines again. And it's because of the problem we're having on Lake Crest. So unfortunately, we're going to have to step up something. And so what I've done is I have added, you know, more money here to try and figure out if we have the ability to step up some of our maintenance. Because if we don't clean the maintenance line, it gets to the pumps. When it gets to the pumps, it fries the pumps. So we spent six thousand dollars on a new pump. So we can spend money on maintenance or money on the pump. That's, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. Water schedule maintenance, we have, basically what that means is something that we have not been doing in the town is we have not been doing a lot of things, opening the fire entrance and exercising the valves. We should be going through town and all the intersections have valves. You should be opening the valves, closing the valves. You have to exercise the valves. That's to keep everything in order. Because sometimes it happens is we have a leak and they go to shut the valve off for the street, they can't. That's why you have these leaks sometimes. And this whole side of town is shut off. Because the isolation valves are frozen. So we have some of those issues. Plus, we're missing some isolation valves. Which part of the capex is gonna be to fix that. There's no reason why we can't isolate each individual street. It's kind of nutty that we have to turn off three streets when there's a leak. So that's a problem trying to rectify. But this is a significant increase there. We can talk about that when the time comes, but that's noteworthy in that that is something that's causing us a problem. I talked about uncontrollable expenses. These are the water and sewer leaks. So we spent forty-two thousand dollars. Now, why did we spend forty-two thousand dollars on the sewer? We had three issues. We had the issue right in front of Melody at the gingerbread house. We had, the sewer main broke. It's twenty-two feet deep. You gotta bring in an excavator. You gotta bring in ditch boxes. You gotta even down twenty-two feet. You gotta fix it. That cost a lot of money. We also had a sewer main break under the street, which is across from Fred and Becky. Right across from their, the empty lot coming under where the new house went in. The tap coming under the street was broken. So we had to go in and fix that tap. Again, we had to excavate down to the sewer line with the excavator to go in and fix that line. It was a massive job to go down deep to fix that line. While we were there, we went ahead and did the drainage work and fixed the inlet, did everything while they were there. We did the drainage improvements because we excavated the whole area. So when we had the excavator four feet away from the eight, from the four-foot-tall pipe, it was sitting in the yard, we buried it. So we fixed the drainage. That was not in here. The other issue we had is the wipes caused a disaster at the sewer plant. The wipes fried two of our motors. Motors are six thousand dollars apiece. So we had to replace the motors. We had to repair the lift station. We had to clean everything out. We had to flush the system. It was a huge repair.
And a blower motor too.
And the blower motor ate itself. Why did the blower motor eat itself? I don't know. It's the tenth motor that we've lost that fried itself. As if the power is somehow bad from Cosworth. So, yeah, we spent forty-two thousand dollars on the sewer system. Last year was nineteen, the water was one. So historically, we've just budgeted ten and ten. And we let it rip. We don't know what's gonna happen. Going back the year before, it's probably a two. It's hitting this. It's just hitting this.
Mark, in your letter, you said that you could trace... I'm thinking about individual liability for the damage of city property that's coming out of the general budget. And you mentioned in your letter that you were able possibly to trace back and those people maybe have to bear some of the expense.
We can try and camera the line.
Well, I'm just asking what that stands with the committee right now.
We haven't, we haven't discussed it.
That was totally in the mayor's letter. There's no consensus here.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I did not, I didn't task Sam to do that. No.
That's all right.
They were beyond the opinions you talked about.
So one of the, I mean, look, the issue here is that we want, this is not the first time. This is multiple times this has happened. We want the people to stop it. So that's all I can do is tell them to stop it and threaten them that if they don't stop it, I'm gonna find out who they are. Okay, that's all I can do. Okay, but, so this is the standard ten and ten guess. There you go. It is what it is. Water equipment, this is water meters, water boxes, the same kind of stuff. Sewer equipment is related to motors and some of the things we do at the sewer plant. That's some of the equipment we use down there. All of this itself is pretty straightforward. Electricity, electricity, we have fifteen thousand. It should actually be less than that, hopefully. A couple of years ago, you can see it was back then it was eighteen. It went down to fourteen, seven. That was because I started chesting the well motors. So we went to power-saving mode where we shut off the wells in the winter. We only run one well rather than having all three wells on. Now we have the new ground storage tank. We believe the electricity consumption should drop again because we'll run the wells less. So if the well goes on and fills, it's very efficient when it's running. It's inefficient when it starts. So if we've got now fifty percent more water, when it runs, it fills up fifty percent more water. That means it doesn't have to run as many times. So that electricity cost, hopefully this year will be lower. We should show some savings there. But it hasn't materialized yet, so I just went with fifteen, which is a good number. We're gonna probably be, you know, we should be pretty close to that number this year. That's kind of where the number comes in. Payroll is summer. Summer, we gave her an increase in her salary. That's summer. And that's her working about thirty, thirty-two hours a week. Again, part of that payroll is actually paid by the city. Because she handles all the building inspections, schedule inspections, all the paperwork. She handles all that city stuff. So that's actually a shared expense. Okay? All right, so that's basically the numbers there. Capital improvements. I plugged in sixty-five. That's a number. A couple of projects that I've talked to Sam about. But that's a number. Totally discretionary. Could be a zero, could be a hundred and sixty-five. Engineer, depends if we call the engineer. Depends what we use the engineer for. If we need the engineer for something, then we'll call the engineer. If we don't think there's tasking, then we won't use the engineer. And you can see, two years ago, we spent seven hundred and seventy dollars. Last year, we spent, or the year before, we spent sixty-seven thousand because we did a well study. And we use the engineer for some of the water and sewer. We had to do a well study to figure out where we'd put a well at if we decide to have another well. So the engineer line is very fluid because it's up to the council to decide if we're gonna do a project that needs the engineer. Any expenditures by the engineer are through a task order. So the engineer says, this is the task I'm gonna perform. It's all in writing. This is the fee I will charge. So I can't task the engineer to run off and do stuff. It has to be through the city council, through individual tasking operations. The only thing I can do are minor things. I can ask the engineer to come and meet with me or clinch or things like that.
Platinum views?
Yeah, platinum views. You said, minor things like, you know, where the other guy's paying. But any, any significant engineering job is what's called a task order. They give us a firm price and say, this is the task. Here's the scope. Here's the deliverables. Here's what we're gonna do. And here is the cost. Done. And that comes to the council and they, you decide whether you wanna do it or not. So that's the engineer. So that's basically the, the utility fund side. This one is basically, this one's basically for information purposes. So we're almost done here. But thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. So this is each one. This is information. These are all of our bond payments. These are the payments we've made. So for this year, we've already made our payment. We pay it twice a year. We pay the principal in one year and we pay the interest later on in August. So the way that, the way that bond payments work, and again, there's some misinformation out there. When, when you issue bonds, when a city issues bonds, it's not like a savings bond. When you buy a savings bond, you buy a bond for a hundred dollars. The government wants to redeem it. The government can't say to you, we're gonna redeem ten dollars of your bond. You can't take the bond and do this. You can't. It's either a hundred-dollar bond or it's nothing. That's what you have to do. You can't redeem part of it. So what cities have to do when they borrow money is they have to agree to pay it off over time. Well, it's not like your mortgage. You can't, it's not one person holding it. What, when you borrow money as a city, we borrowed one point six million dollars. What we actually borrowed was one thousand, six hundred individual thousand-dollar bonds. There's actually sixteen hundred of them. Because the bank or the underwriter can sell them to anybody. Fred could buy one. Daryl could buy one. They're in thousand-dollar increments. Now, what I have to do as the city investment officer, as the, as the financial officer back when we borrowed the money, I pick how we're gonna do that. I sit down with the advisors and I say, here's how we're gonna pay it off. Then what they do is they go to the banks and say, okay, pavement village, they're gonna pay off a hundred and twenty thousand. They're gonna be one-year bonds. So at the end of one year, they go away. Then a hundred and forty of them are two-year bonds. And a hundred and fifty-two of them are three-year bonds. And then there are four-year. There's actually ten piles. So in the fourth year, these are dead. They're expired. Bang. So that's how you pay them off. So the bank then looks at it and goes, okay, we want one percent for these and one and a half for those and one and a quarter for those. And the bank looks at ten different sets of bonds and comes up with one interest rate for the whole thing. So they're averaging out, because some of them are ten-year. Some of them are one-year. And they get, and all the banks have to bid on it as one interest rate. And that's what we do. So each year, it's preset. So for instance, for us, for this year right here, we paid off a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of our three-year bonds. So the bonds that were dying in year three, we had to pay them off. It was a hundred and fifty-four thousand. That's exactly what we had to pay to retire, to kill the three-year bonds. So they're gone. Next year, so next year, what we have to do, whoops. So next year, what we're gonna have to do is the hundred and fifty, sorry, a hundred and fifty-four thousand is next year. The last year was a hundred and forty-nine. So when I picked the numbers that add up to one point six million, I put an escalator in there. So we pay a little bit more each year because the thought was, we'll have a little bit more money each year. We'll get a little bit better at it. But we're not gonna pay too much in the first year because we wanna make sure that we have the money. So I was conservative. Now, in year five, we can now pay them off early. So starting in year five, so after next year, the council, I can bring to you now another sheet of paper which says, okay, do you wanna pay off any of the ten-year guys? Or do you wanna pay off the, you know, next year's guys? Which bonds do you wanna pay off? The ten-year guys, the seven-year guys? And we can pay them off early. Now, it doesn't change the interest rate. It's still one interest rate for all of the money. It changes our interest expense. We don't pay interest expense. But the bank doesn't recalculate our interest rate. We have one interest rate for all of our money. And it's one of the best interest rates of any city around. We got an incredible rate because of our financial strength. Okay, so that's how bond payments work. So for us right now, that's where the nickel goes. So when you look at this, so for instance, this year right here, that's ending coming up, we got forty-four thousand dollars from that nickel. But our payment was one hundred and seventy-three thousand. So we had the nickel. Then I transferred a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of your tax money, of your regular general fund tax money, over. And then we used it to make the payments. Now, we haven't made this payment yet, but the money is already sitting there in the account. So this is where I think we're gonna end up, in our debt servicing account. This is where that account's gonna be. Now, in January, in December and January, the money comes in and this is that forty-eight thousand that I budgeted of the nickel. So the nickel's gonna come in. These are our payments that we're gonna have to make. So that's the money that's gotta come out of the general fund. That's how much of our tax money we gotta transfer on. And then here's our payments. Okay? So that's why I came up with those numbers on the general fund side. But that's our debt payment. And then next year, we'll pay it again. Yeah.
So is the general fund transfer likely to be a reducing figure over the next...
I'm gonna put it in the mayor's letter. It has been going down. Yeah, so it's been doing great. Yeah, because another way to think about this is, if you go back up to here, okay, the first year that we did the bonds, we transferred a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that the year before, we could use to run the city. That's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that we had. We could've done street repairs. We could've doubled Linda's salary. We could've put eight more pieces of playground equipment. The year before that, we had that money. So we took a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that we used to have to spend. We sucked it up with the bond payment. That's why it was brutal the first two years. Now, to everybody's advantage, and I'm gonna bring this up in the mayor's letter, what was fantastic is that the sales tax kicked in. Everybody did a fantastic job about increasing the sales tax. That helped us out by filling in, the money that I had to take out of this bucket to pay the bond, you filled partially with the extra tax money. And we got a couple more houses. And our property value is up by four percent. So it, it's been going down over time. It's been very nice. And so that's why we're over the hump. But it was very hard. That first year was pretty tough. That's why we zeroed out the playground. Because that was a lot of money to take out of our day-to-day budget and dedicate to the, to the, to the bond payment. But we're great now. We're in real good shape. Very good shape. Okay, so that's the debt servicing stuff. Again, it's plug-and-play. There is really nothing the council has to do here. We don't have a choice. It is what it is. So, all right, so that is kind of the, the bond payment. Road maintenance fund, so one of the things that, that we agreed to do when we... So one of the things that happened when we decided to put in the concrete roads, remember I told you, we decided to zero out the playground and road repairs? We zeroed those out and said, till we figure out all the bond payments and figure out where we're at, we're not gonna do that discretionary stuff. Well, after, after a year of that, what I, what I decided to do was, I decided to say, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take the road repairs off of the general fund. We're not gonna put it in the general fund budget. We're gonna move it off to a different budget. But we're gonna give it its own money. We're gonna fund it with something else. So that way, we don't have to use the tax money to do the road repairs. We're gonna set up and give it money. And so when it's got money to do repairs, it's self-funding. So when it's got the money, it'll do the repairs. And then when it gets more money, it'll do more repairs. So we don't have to worry about using tax money to do this. It's self-funding. So what we did was, we, we took the EDC half a cent sales tax and we started chucking it into this fund. The MDD also contributed for two thousand and fifteen. Then we had franchise fees that we took in. And we required those blue trash containers. We require now new houses to stop throwing their trash in the woods and to stop with the four sheets of plywood where all the trash blows. You've gotta have a roll-off container that gets put in the dump that doesn't end up in the woods. And that generates a fee to the city. Because allied gets, and also generates sales tax. So that was the funding mechanism that we put in place. And the idea was, this is gonna generate money. And then when it reaches a critical mass, we'll do road repairs. So in two thousand and sixteen, we went ahead and did road repairs. We did, we did twenty-five thousand from Melody Lane. And we did Particar. That was the twenty-five thousand. Now, so we ended last year with six thousand. So this year, we budgeted about another thirty-seven thousand coming in. Which means if we didn't spend any money, we'd end the year with forty-four. Well, we've agreed as the council, I think we've agreed, that we're looking at spending about twenty-five again. So based upon where we're at, this, again, the sales tax is running ahead. The franchise fees are running on schedule. We've gotten about four thousand dollars. We're getting about a thousand dollars a month from the blue roll-offs. So if this is what we're gonna take in, this is what I think we're gonna take in by the end of September, is twenty-six. So we have six. We're taking another twenty-six. We believe, I think we've talked about, spending another twenty-five.
Well, we're hoping for thirty.
Well, we're hoping for 30.
Hoping to spend 30. I plugged 25 in here, so if we, the idea is that we do the road repairs in September. We do it at the end of the year because we have the money. And because the paving guys, it's the off-season. They pave in the summer when it's hot. When it starts getting into fall, when it cools off, that's when you get, you can make hay because it's slowly yed. So for us, that's the optimal time because our job is small. So, when we reach September, I'll have a better number here, and then the council will decide, do we do 25, do we do 30, what do we wanna do? But I think, I think the council agrees, um, that we were gonna earmark the money for Care in Hyridge. Those are two streets we're gonna do, that's the last two shipment seal streets, were those two. And see how far we get, try to get as far as we can. One of my, um, ideas is that if we, assuming that we do those repairs and those repairs are successful, and I, why don't you talk about the fixes? The warranty work?
Yeah, but any of the patches that fail are gonna be repaired at no cost to us.
No cost, so there's a couple places that spider-veined, those are all gonna be repaired.
Yeah.
And so that, I think that's, I think that's very good. So one of my ideas is potentially for 2018, depending upon what we do for the repairs, remember that's September of this year, so that's in this year's budget. So, for next year, for the, for the budget we're going to adopt, there's no expenses in here, I haven't put anything in. So there's a couple possibilities here. One possibility is, we do more repairs, because there's more repairs to do. Another possibility is, we could use this money to start getting things worked out for the concrete streets in that, for example, we know we wanna move the Hyridge mailboxes off the street. We've talked about before, we have to have a drive-through lane. We wanna get you off the street. We've talked about, we can move the mailboxes off the street, which we're gonna have to do for the concrete roads anyway. Just like we moved these, you gotta get them off the street. So we know it's inevitable, we're gonna move them. And so we've talked about just moving them backwards from where they are. And then we have enough easement there, enough right-of-way that we can put a full pull-off lane so we can get off the street. That way we don't have to worry about the parking that's going on at the intersection. So one possibility is, the council decides, you know what, let's use this money to put in that bypass lane. It's perfectly fine, this is a road fund, it's up to the council. This money is earmarked, it's not restricted. We just say internally, this is what we're gonna earmark it for. But the, the accountant, it's not restricted funds, we can use it for anything. It's not required to be used for anything. So, I'm just thinking out of the box that if we're, having with the repairs, let's start getting our ducks in a row. We know we have to do some of these things, let's get ahead of it, let's move this stuff off. Another possibility that, um, Clint brought up was that potentially in next year or maybe the year after, we could use some of this funds maybe to go out and start doing the, uh, boring, the geotech work for the concrete roads. They have to go and bore under the street and get course samples. And go ahead and pay the engineering to come out and maybe start doing some of that. Start paying for that because it's not gonna move. But again, starting some of the preliminary work maybe to get, you know, further down to get ahead of some of this concrete road stuff. So, it's, it's a very open budget. So, a lot of it depends upon where we're gonna be, we don't have to put anything there right now. But, you know, we're gonna have about roughly $30,000 in it potentially, and...